I'll call the meeting to order at six thirty two P M. Welcome, everyone. Hope everyone is staying cool today. Brutal. But what we'll start is with the approval of the regular session meeting minutes. So we do have to. We have the May fifteenth twenty twenty five meeting minutes. Be the first one on the agenda. And so just see if anyone has any comments on those.
I was good with all of them, just to not to jump ahead, but.
Yep, no, it's fine. There's no other comments. Do someone make a motion to approve the the meetings minimums for five fifteen?
So moved.
Okay.
Actually, Doug, what if we do them all at once?
Sure, we can do that. You guys also, okay, so if no one has any comments, do we get maybe a motion to approve the meeting minutes for regular session on? May fifteenth and June third.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, Al?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
And Doug is aye. Awesome. All right, great. And then we will do the executive session meeting minutes in executive session later today for those two. All right, so next item on the agenda is the housing production plan, so I will. Promote. Sarah Brent. Sarah Brent, hopefully you can hear us.
Hi, I can hear you. Can you hear me and see me?
Yep, we can. Perfect. Perfect. And Sarah Brent, is there anyone else with you today? Or is it just you? Just make sure there's no one else in the lobby. Okay.
It's just me.
Okay, great, awesome. All right, well, I will turn it over Ellen to you and Sarah Brent and let you guys take it from here.
Great, thank you. So we had another check in with Sarah Brent last Tuesday. And she's shared the updated draft that we sent around to the full group. I'm still continuing to work in that working document, particularly around some of the the strategies. And the last week or so. And so these are ones that we have talked through. Sort of generally as the full group, but also got into a bit more detailed in our meeting last Tuesday morning. So really building out both kind of production specific strategies and then another bucket of non-production strategies, but kind of steps that the trust in the town could take that would support kind of the general housing ecosystem in the town. So we sent over those revisions yesterday. And yeah, we can turn it over to Sarah Brent if you want to take us through those.
Sure, yeah, that'd be great. Thank you, everybody. So in terms of, I mean, you've all received the draft and I've been making some small, you know, sort of mostly aesthetic updates since. But I, in terms of the feedback I'm hoping to get from you, it'd be great to just again have another round of sort of overall feedback and walk through the document together. But also, as we get to the strategy section, starting to fill out some of those, you know, first step or next step for each of the strategies. So walk through, I am, would it be best if I share my screen?
Yeah, I would recommend, yeah, it'd be great. Would you have some Southborough residents in the audience as well too? It'd be great for them to be able to see it. So if you could put it up, that'd be great.
All right, I'm wondering if I should stay in sort of edit mode so that we can see some of the notes. Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do. All right. Because I think Ellen's been leaving some helpful comments to guide discussion tonight as well, and so this will be off to the side. Are you all able to see this?
Yep, I guess, yep.
Sure, so we've been working with members of the trust to put together this document that starts by outlining. I guess there, I guess I should step back. A housing production plan really has three main components, which is housing needs assessment, setting up affordable housing goals for for the community and setting forward strategies to achieve those goals. So this has been an expedited timeline putting this together. So we start with the goals. But here we've included some of the existing Southborough housing goals from previous projects, including the twenty twenty housing production plan and the twenty twenty one master plan. Just for reference, this won't be included in any final plan. But as we go to the draft housing production plan goals for this year, you know, we we really want to benefit from the engagement and visioning that that supported those efforts earlier on. So these are really a in some ways, a summary of those previous goals, but in other ways, updated and informed by more emerging, up to date concerns. So those goals are to encourage a variety of housing types beyond single-family homes, including townhouses, duplexes, ADUs and small apartment buildings in contextually appropriate locations to provide residents with a wide range of housing options for diversity of life stages and at a range of affordability levels. To facilitate the development of housing options that are attainable for Southborough residents at different stages of life. And I think we didn't, I can't remember if we had the note to remove the specific examples or to keep those for that one. The third one, we have reinforcing Southborough's economic goals by supporting local businesses through the provision of expanded housing choices that conserve the diverse local workforce. Supporting the design of housing development that is complementary to the town's architectural character and wood landscapes while minimizing the impacts of new development on priority areas for open space conservation and resource protection purposes. Maintaining and improving the condition of the town's housing stock while preserving its stock of a naturally occurring affordable housing. We can get into what naturally occurring affordable housing means later, but basically it's existing housing that isn't subsidized to be affordable, but because of its size and the time that it was built and the the sort of pattern of ownership it might be and and have existed as a more affordable option for a household to live in than than new construction. Going down the list, another goal is to assist Southborough residents to obtain and maintain housing that they can afford. Another one is to enhance local capacity to advocate for, plan, develop and manage affordable housing. Finally, maintaining forty B safe harbor through the provision of affordable units equal to ten percent of all units. And investing in infrastructure to facilitate the development of housing in priority areas. Up here in the executive summary, we just highlight the sort of big picture production goal, which is, you know, we find through the housing needs assessment and we'll walk through that methodology shortly. For Southborough to maintain a healthy housing market and also maintain forty B safe harbor, Southborough should add two hundred and fifty five units, including twenty eight subsidized housing inventory units over the next five years. So twenty twenty five to twenty three.
Sarah Brent, one thing, one thing I would say just on this slide, sorry, I have to interrupt. Because I think you have it elsewhere, but I would think just you might want to add in Southborough should add over the next five years, two hundred and fifty five units, just for clarity.
Great. So getting into how we land on that number and we'll we'll see that slide again. We look at both the housing needs related to, you know, the number of people who are, the number of households that are cost burdened, the expected household growth over the next five years. In addition to, sorry, housing needs is sort of the needs of people who exist there already. So if there's a low vacancy rate or there aren't the types of housing that people who live there today would need, those are housing needs. And then housing demand is sort of thinking about you know, how how Southborough is changing and growing. And those two combined to give us a production target. And that is is where we land on two fifty five. So just looking at net household growth alone, if recent trends extend, we could we could expect one hundred and seventy one additional households by twenty thirty. Here on this slide, we're breaking it down by AMI group, very immediate income group. So as we see, just as the majority or a large portion of the community of Southborough is in that one twenty percent AMI and over range. That is also the range where we're seeing the largest net new growth. Some other insights here, the number of households in Southborough has been growing at an average rate of just over one percent a year. And for reference, the one hundred percent regional AM, the regional household area muted income is around one hundred and seventy three thousand dollars. Here, we're breaking down, you know, how do we get from one seventy one to two fifty five, one seventy one being that net growth in households. But two fifty five being that number plus a few other indicators that we use to to make sure there's enough housing to have a healthy vacancy rate to replace aging or, you know, housing stock that might be no longer. There's, I guess, there's just a, there's a sort of healthy rate of housing replacement over time, and that gives us two additional units. We didn't see in the data any meaningful levels of overcrowding or substandard housing beyond the national average. So there are no adjustments there to get us that two hundred and fifty five number or around fifty one units per year. I see Ellen has a general comment here, maybe for group discussion. I don't know if that's now or later, but I like the idea of saying homes instead of units, if that feels, that feels right.
Yeah, I wanted to see what what the group thought of that. It's something we've talked a lot about in my work setting of kind of how we message things and, you know, the idea that we're really trying to provide homes. It's not just, you know, kind of a unit count, but really the place for people to live. And so wanted to see if that's terminology people are are comfortable with and kind of using that throughout.
It's okay with me.
Well, the only thing is, I mean, it's it's a specific like formula though, right, Sarah Brent, where you're arriving at? Like a specific number of dwelling units. I mean, homes, that could be like a two family or three family, you know what I mean?
I think that would be a building in my mind. And then
Okay.
It's really the one location. If it's, you know, if this introduces confusion, then we don't have to go down this path.
So dwell, what about dwelling units? Would that be okay?
Yeah, I'm sort of indifferent between units and dwelling units.
Okay, all right.
This, I mean, this, again, this could just be me, but yeah, sort of reinforcing that we're talking about, you know, places for our neighbors to live.
No, I I agree with Ellen, you know. It's it's hard enough to do anything and, you know, to the extent that we are talking about homes for people rather than sort of these cold and sterile units, I think you know, the the language we use matters.
If it's hopeful, early in the report, the first time we use the word home, we can clarify what we mean by that. That it doesn't mean that it's currently occupied or or that that it's just the the word we're using for inventory units, I guess.
Thank you.
All right, if that's that, I can move on.
Right.
All right, so breaking down the two fifty, you know, if if we're sort of encouraging or projecting a need for two hundred and fifty five units, twenty eight of those would need to be subsidized housing units, subsidized housing inventory units. So that the the town can meet its ten percent S H I goal and achieve forty B safe harbor.
So Sarah Brent, same thing here. I would just add in right after Southborough. You know, Southborough over the next five years should add two hundred and fifty five units.
Great.
Just for clarity.
Yep, that's helpful.
Need a space. Go back one. Between years and and should.
Yep, there you go.
Thank you. And I'll come back to this one. There's some crowding now, so. Looking, you know, at where Southborough has been adding units, we look at assessor data. I talked with Laura Davis in with the Z B A to confirm that this would likely be the best option for seeing everything that's been built since twenty nineteen. So I, this is just everything that has a built date in the assessors database of twenty nineteen or since. So this is, this is where they're clustering throughout town.
And does it say, how many units actually did we add?
This would be, I guess, twenty nineteen.
Oh, it's a back, okay, yep, yep, gotcha, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, it's all right, okay, no problem, yep.
Okay. So the housing needs assessment both looks at sort of the the raw number of homes that that the town would need to add, but it also provides some context for the types of housing that the town might need to add to meet needs and demand of who lives there now and who's who's who maybe would like to live there. Looking at historical trends, Southborough's largest gains population have been among young adults and adults sixty five plus, which are two core cohorts with pretty diverse housing needs. But but in some ways, these can be compatible compatible. Younger adults potentially looking for starter homes or smaller units sort of before they have family and older adults potentially looking for you know, more flexible living situations or intergenerational living, you know, smaller units closer to family or or one person household homes. So as we see those two cohorts growing, those, the sort of smaller, flexible, smaller household units or homes could be in higher demand. Looking specifically at older adults looking to downsize, we find that there are an estimated five hundred and eighty five homes or five hundred and eighty five households of individuals sixty five plus with one or two people in the home and with three or more bedrooms. So recognizing that this may be a mismatch for some people's preferred living situation. Southborough could expect a handful of these to to downsize over over the next five years. Moving on. So the need is also informed by the share of Southborough residents that are currently spending more than thirty percent of their income on monthly housing costs. This is both renter households and owner households that own their homes. We find that and to clarify, a cost burden means that you're spending more than thirty percent or more of your income on monthly housing costs and severely cost burdened means you're spending fifty percent or more of your monthly income on housing costs. We find as as might be expected, cost burden is pretty, pretty pretty heavily felt at the lower income ranges. So under thirty percent AMI, under sixty percent AMI and eighty percent AMI and lower. But we also do see some cost burdened households at at the higher higher range. Another thing we noticed that informs the two hundred and fifty five number is you have very low vacancy rates across rental owner occupied and different unit sizes. So that's, you know, to to have a healthy housing market. It's you know, there there are certain vacancy rates to to aim for. We also notice here, you know, there's, there's a lot, I guess, baked into this chart, but we also notice here that, you know, there's a, there's a meaningful majority of units with at least three bedrooms as well as a meaningful majority of detached single family homes. Looking at typical home prices, they have really, really tipped up in the past five years or so. We find the typical home price in as of twenty twenty five, according to this Zillow data in Southborough is nine hundred and twenty twenty, nine hundred and twenty two thousand dollars. That's up from, you know, something closer to six hundred in twenty twenty. Additionally, so this is one, this is one measure of of the the housing that's available to buy right now. The second chart is is the, is representative of the cost of typical homes. Is the, is representative of what people are spending monthly as as existing homeowners that maybe bought their house before it reached, you know, nine hundred thousand dollars. So these are much more spread out across the affordability spectrum. And I see Ellen's note here about making the cost buckets more equivalent across the axis. Currently, they are split up by AMI group and I can make that note somewhere or or what's what's affordable to each AMI group. So, you know, from the bottom, under thirty percent AMI and in in those same increments as as the other charts up to one twenty percent AMI and above. So I can either make these cleaner breaks or if if that's more legible, or I can make that note that these are by AMI group.
Yeah, I think either way, I think at my first glance, I was just trying to, you know, compare the size of the the bars and so yeah, I think if we want to keep it this way, that's fine, but I appreciate adding the note. But yeah, open to what other people think, which way is kind of easier to interpret.
I have a strong opinion, but I think adding a note would be helpful.
Great.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, then we can move forward. Monthly costs for rental households, we find also are pretty spread across the affordability spectrum. Again, this might be, you know, leases that somebody that people signed. Not just in the past year. There isn't enough data on, you know, reliable good margin bearer data, at least from Zillow, which is typically the source that we use strictly for Southborough to include a similar line chart for for typical rents. But we do see here that monthly home costs for renting households are are more centered or a little bit centered at the lower AMI levels. And I'll make that same note here about the brackets. This is a chart that we that people seem often find helpful to really understand how the dynamic has changed, not just since your housing production plan in twenty twenty, but also just over the past three years. Prior to twenty twenty two, I would say in Southborough, as in many other places, the median, the the home price, the the typical home price was below what a median income household could afford. As of twenty twenty two, there's quite a meaningful gap between the home price that's affordable to median incomes, given interest rates, given to, given, not just the incomes, but interest rates and other monthly costs. There's, there's quite a meaningful difference between that and the the typical home price. So, you know, this, I think this indicates really well just how much the problem has changed and or really not changed even, but just ramped up in the past few years.
Hey, Sarah Brent, I just have a question. So you have our median income over two hundred thousand. Am I missing something?
We
What do you have for our median income?
It's one seventy, one seventy three is the regional AMI.
The regional, okay.
So yes, there's, there's, sorry, there's a difference between the regional sort of HUD standardized AMI, which is one seventy three, and that's beyond Southborough. And then here, let me confirm.
Yeah, I'm just checking with the Fannie site and it's one two two seven zero zero.
As of twenty twenty five?
Yeah, current. I will send you a snippet of this.
I think also the Fannie State is probably household income. And I think Sarah Brent, the other one is family income. Is that right?
Yes, ours is household.
So I think there are just two different measures.
Man, it's the census tract driven median income for like subsidized loan products. Anyway, I'll send it over. Maybe I hope it's helpful.
Sure, yeah, we'll we'll double check that. I'll take a look at that and see what the differences there. Looking at other household details by AMI group, we see that we look at, you know, the age of householder, which is different from, you know, population of different ages. There are no households, there's apparently in in Southborough underage twenty five. We look at the distribution of AMIs across different races as well as household types, just to understand, you know, where where households with or where and how or I guess, yeah, how different income groups are are living, you know, whether it's as part of a non-family household that includes living alone or with roommates or in a family household with children or without children. Looking again, or a similar adjacent data, I guess, and seeing how some of these specific household types types have changed. We see that there are more single person and roommate households today or as of twenty twenty three than there were in twenty fifteen. And there are meaningfully more married couple family households, around three hundred more. than there were in twenty fifteen. There are meaningfully fewer adults living with their parents. And slightly fewer married couple families without children. Or single parents with, with, living with children. So that's hopefully painting a picture of the need in terms of numbers of homes. But also characterizing the, the types of the types of demographic trans informing, informing demand and need. So another major part of the housing production plan is the, is the strategies. And we, we started off by saying, you know, Southborough is already doing a lot here. You just passed your MBTA Communities Housing, Communities Overlay. You updated the downtown district zoning since, since your last housing production plan. Your, you know, the, the state has now required legalization of ADU construction in single family districts. These can all serve as key strategies for you to meet that two hundred and fifty-five production goal. Additionally, you have or an already permitted forty B project in one twenty Turnpike, as well as other forty B projects that are, that are not yet permitted, but, but in the mix. And so we've, we've highlighted those here. Two fifty Turnpike and three fifty two Turnpike. These characterizations, these characterizations that put together with Laura Davis from the ZDA. And, and, you know, we know that it's just as of June twenty twenty-five and, and just these things are are moving targets a little bit. Additionally, we highlight here that, you know, the town is some of these strategies came from things that you're already thinking about and talking about as a affordable housing trust. As well as some outlining some strategies that maybe haven't been haven't been, you know, recent, recent agenda items, I guess. So walking through again, the, the things that are already underway. One production strategy is for the town to use the state ADU legalization to add small unit capacity for flexible, young or aging households. We walk through here. That ADUs, you know, Southborough has an estimated thirty-one ADU units already permitted by the ZPA. And in the past five years, three of those have been approved. Anecdotally, per ZPA staff, there's been a recent uptick in interest following the state legislation, but no permits. Permits approved. In terms of estimating the impact of adding ADUs to meeting your production goal. You know, we can't, we can't totally predict because the state legislation just passed or that the legalization just passed. We can't totally predict what, what impact that's going to have. But we can look at precedents from other places that made it easier to build ADUs. You know, much longer ago. So applying those rates of production from places like Portsmouth, New Hampshire and Dover, New Hampshire. Southborough could expect three to four ADUs per year or up to twenty eight use over the housing production plan timeline. This, this amounts to about sixty-eight percent of the housing production target.
So Sarah Brand, and I'm curious what the other committee members think on this one. I think the third paragraph is pretty dense, right? And understanding, you know, you're trying to figure out, you know, what the rate of production should be or how to allocate it. I wonder if it could be more of a simple footnote of referencing, you know, the growth rate, you know, from other cities.
Sure.
Because I also, the other thing too, which is missing here, and I'm curious Jesse, because Jesse's been involved in the ADUs discussion, but I feel like instead of the third paragraph, like that one, maybe there's something more about the opportunities that ADUs provide, you know, for our residents, right? Whether it's adult children being able to move an elderly parent into, you know, next to their home or as part of their home. A senior citizen being able to have an ADU that helps offset costs of higher real estate. I mean, trying to think it might be something more that help explain why we think ADUs are an important part. Because it is about, you know, another housing diversity type. But maybe you kind of have that, well, you do have up there, so maybe. But I thought the third paragraph is just a bit dense, right? So that's, that's the only comment I would have there.
Sure, yeah, I think I can fill out a little bit more about the specific use cases that we'll want to highlight there, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I'm trying to find my ADU like presentation. So I'll, I'll dig it up.
Great, yeah, I mean, the whole point being that Southborough is already working on this stuff, so we should, we should reference work you'll have already been doing. All right, great. The next thing again is something that's already underway. You have the MBTA Communities Overlay Districts passed and, and adopted. But now it's just time to, to utilize them. Here we highlight the three sub-districts on the official town MBTA Communities map. As you're all aware, the requirement was that, the state requirement was that the town adopt a district with capacity for at least seven hundred and fifty units. The town adopted a complaint district with eight hundred and twenty-eight. It's like buffer as, as encouraged by the state. But ultimately, you know, if we subtract existing housing units on those sites from that total, Southborough has the potential to add six hundred and fifty-eight net new units under the adopted MBTA Community zoning. So that can be, that can be a meaningful contributor to meeting your production goal. Additionally, we note here, you do have the ten percent affordable requirement. Meaning ten percent of units built in the MBTA Communities Overlay would need to be affordable to a family or household at eighty percent or AMI or below. So this is a, this is a meaningful way for Southborough to add SHI capacity and meet and meet safe harbor. Another production strategy we propose here is removing the older adult housing unit cap from the town bylaws. This is something that I believe this group has talked about in the past. And we highlight here exactly what that cap is. And some examples of some existing older adult age restricted housing that already exists in Southborough. These were two of the recommendations that we got from, from our last conversation. So it'd be helpful if y'all could confirm that those are the right ones to be showing.
Look good to me.
In terms of a next step with this one, is it just remove the language from the bylaw? Is it that simple? Or is there any more analysis that we should be teeing up?
I believe, I believe it would be, you know, zoning change required two-thirds at town meeting. So it'd be a warrant article.
Do you think, so there is, right, the fall town meeting? Do we feel like it would be reasonable to target a change for then or for next annual town meeting?
Fall town meeting would be the right place to do it. And, you know, you might choose to either eliminate it or bump it up to ten percent. And that might be a little easier pill to swallow. It's not easy, as Jesse, well, I'm sure attests, to get a zoning change through town meeting. I think there'll be at least one other or maybe two other zoning ordinances that'll be in, in the fall. But I, I, I think this, this group should perhaps offer up a warrant article to that effect. Jesse, how do you feel about that?
It depends on the workload with the planning department, because I would think that that's how it would go through. Alan, I mean, wouldn't, would you agree or would you think that select board would push it?
I, I think you'd probably get support from the select board. I'm speaking out of turn, of course, because I haven't asked yet.
Right.
But we can certainly put that on, on an agenda item. You know.
You know what we can do, Al, is when we're, because in a couple of weeks, we're having the joint meeting.
Yes.
I think that'd be the opportunity to float it with both boards at the same time.
I, I'm, I'm all there.
Does anybody know what the thinking was behind this restriction? And the seven percent number in particular?
It's a good question. I don't know. It wasn't done when I was planning, so I couldn't say.
It was, it was probably done to prevent some, some developments, but the, the financial reality, and I, I can say this because I'm old, is that the fifty-five plus population are the tax cash cows of the town. You know, the, we don't have kids in school and we, but we pay the same tax rates as everybody else. So, you know, we typically provide more income than we consume in services. It's just a fact of life, so I, I, I'm in favor of, of either changing it if that's the easiest path or completely eliminating it, if that, that makes sense.
I guess that's why I was asking, like, is there some harm to eliminating it?
I'll be pretty shocked if we get any opposition from anybody on eliminating it, but
Yeah, I've been around before.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so we have our next step. For this one, identify opportunities for housing development on underutilized sites along Route Nine. Town should consider additional redevelopment strategies and or zoning changes for underutilized sites along Route Nine. Sites, so in this map, we're highlighting sites that are either vacant or where the assessed value of the existing building is meaningfully lower than the value of the site's land. So in, in pink on the map are seventy-three parcels, which are at least partially within five hundred feet of Route Nine, where the land is more valuable than the structures. They're not conservation lands. And fifty-two of these parcels are currently not residential uses, so the majority. And about a third of them currently have their use listed as vacant. And, and you'll see that large parcel in, at the bottom, there's some sort of cutouts. I've removed all acreage that is per EUHLC's excluded land, undevelopable land layer is, is deemed undevelopable. And I, I link their their definition of excluded or, or land that cannot support housing development.
So I think, so again, I think this is great from where we started, where we're showing sites all across the town, right? You know, more focused on Route Nine. Curious of the committee members' thoughts, but Sarah Brand, I might suggest also, we may still want to like, this is really about select additional redevelopment opportunities along the corridor. Just more for, you know, the town, we're not looking to necessarily convert the entire commercial town, you know, tax base either. So this is really about just, you know, looking for some select opportunities along this corridor where it's better suited, you know, for more denser housing opportunities. But just, I would say, state that, because again, it's a, you know, a lot of this is the commercial lifeline of Southborough, so we're not looking to actually diminish that. We're just looking to, which you kind of already say, just by underutilized sites. But just want to make sure, you know, folks, you know, from the trust's perspective, is that we're not trying to eliminate all commercial land along the corridor. It's more just looking for select infill opportunities.
Yeah, I did a, an analysis with the wastewater group. And there are about, I think it was a hundred and sixty-five acres of undeveloped or underdeveloped. And I'm sorry, a part, a hundred and sixty-five parcels of underdeveloped or undeveloped along Route Nine. And, you know, so we could certainly some fraction of them could be developed. I think there are some challenges on the east end of town. Because where perking is, is, is an issue. And that's certainly in the center and western part portions of the town. I think there might be one or two sites there that, that we could avail ourselves of.
So, but Al, to Doug's point, does, does residential generate comparable revenue to commercial?
Well, so the, the commercial is definitely definitely generates more revenue than it consumes in ser- services. My understanding is that rental properties are generally also cash flow positive. But what's cash flow negative in general are, are sort of single family homes as a group.
So but it's like true commercial usage? Non-residential, more cash flow positives?
Um, I've never, I have not dug into it, but yeah, I happen to be, have looked at, for example, if we had a, a big box store on Route Nine. And that could be a Home Depot or a Target or Costco or BJ's or whatever. You know, they, they get assessed for between twenty and thirty million dollars. And at our tax rates, that would be between three and four hundred thousand dollars a year of tax revenue. So that, you know, it's that beats a sharp stick in the eye to get our to get our tax rates, our, our commercial versus residential split back to the sort of historic average of eighty, twenty. We need about a hundred and sixty million dollars worth of commercial development in town. Like many towns, you know, our, our residential tax rates have been rising faster than our costs because residential value has been rising faster than commercial and industrial values. And the only place where we're going to get a hundred and sixty million dollars worth of commercial and industrial development is along Route Nine and in the, the, the former EMC area, which I consider to be sort of part of a long Route Nine.
So am I hearing, like you, you, you basically agree with Doug then, that this slide sort of challenges the, or in some way, what's the right word? It's not threatened.
But so there, there's a tension. You're absolutely correct. Because, you know, we, we're looking at sort of the commercial gem of the town. But it is also, I, I think it both can be done.
Yeah.
Particularly if we're talking about dense housing. You know, so we're talking about, you know, the sort of thing where, well, you, you, if you've driven through Marlboro or you've driven through, you know, you, you see, you know, these very dense apartment buildings that are, you know, sixty and seven, sixty units plus. And so, you know, those have a particularly modest footprint. Particularly, and this is where wastewater could come into play, is if we had a wastewater system, then we could probably do both. Because, you know, you, all of a sudden, the footprint becomes significantly less. Today, you know, if you've got to have, you know, acres of land, which is typically paved to accommodate, you know, the waste flows from a building, depending on what the soils look like, if the soils will even permit it. So for example, you know, I, I spent some time on the USDA soils map. And, you know, you know, there's a golf center on the east edge of town and, you know, the soils there are very poor. There's a lot of bedrock that's close to the, the surface. We had a wastewater plant. There might have been, might, that might parcel might be amenable to a different use.
One thing, just to go back, I think, and Sarah Bren, correct me if I'm wrong, in order for us to be quote unquote, a compliant housing production plan, right? We need to identify some potential parcels in town, right? And more just for the committee's benefit, again, reminding where we started, I think, you know, some towns have basically looked at the entire area of a town, right? And identified any available parcels, potentially city-owned or otherwise. I think when we talked last, we wanted to be a bit more focused along the Route nine corridor and trying to avoid parcels that are deeper into the neighborhoods. Um, and, you know, but here, Jess, this definitely I was bringing, I think I'll characterize even better, like, I do think there's a bit of a natural tension. So I think the goal here was just to make sure, as um, Sarah Bren has added, we just had some language in like, there's definitely an opportunity to direct some more denser housing in order to achieve the units we want to create along the Route nine corridor, but acknowledging too, that our goal here is obviously to make sure that we still, you know, preserve, as Alice said, our commercial opportunities, right? Because that's still what's going to help us in the tax revenue. So I, I think it's just looking for kind of a balance statement here around the commercial. So, if that's helpful.
Yeah, and, and there, there certainly, there are still a few fairly significant undeveloped parcels of land in town that aren't along Route nine. One of them is in my neighborhood.
Yeah, I was thinking about this um, in relation to the next slide as well, that gets more specifically to the wastewater issue. Um, and I think put in a little language to this effect um, around, you know, the ability for dense multifamily housing to also um, help offset some of this, this tax burden and, you know, the ability to think about the Route nine corridor as an opportunity for both that denser multifamily development and the commercial development.
Yeah.
That, that's what I was going to say. I mean, it seems to me, first of all, you've got a ton of parcels there. So it's, I mean, it seems like there's room for both, but you know, I, I could picture a housing development that also has commercial aspects, whether it's stores, restaurants, whatever.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it requires some, yeah, to, to give you an example, um, Bob Moss serves on the wastewater committee with me. And uh, he built Madison Place. And if wastewater system was available, uh, they could actually build more units in the place where currently their, their septic system is.
Yep.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's a huge parcel of land. I think that's nineteen acres at Madison Place. Um, with a tax bill in the upper hundreds of thousands every year. And we have some single family parcels that are around the same size in town that pay twenty thousand dollars in taxes every year. So I think the density strategy and the infrastructure strategy, I think, meet the same end.
Great. Um, is there, I mean, do we, we've kept the language pretty soft at the beginning of this. Should consider additional redevelopment strategies and or zoning changes for underu- underutilized sites. Um, do we want to call out specific zoning changes to again, consider? Um, you know, specifying, uh, I don't know if it's um, different um, use allowances or uh, density allowances or um, development of a new district or overly, you know, how, how specific do we want to get there beyond what's there already in this sentence?
Well, it seems to recall at the last meeting, we talked about expanding Res B.
Yes, that's um, on a separate, it is on a separate um, slide. Uh, where we talk about specifically um, rate sizing the minimum lot size um, and potentially expanding um, uh, I guess reassigning two small parcels to a more permissive zone, such as uh, R B. Um, but we could also highlight uh, that strategy here specifically along um, these underutili- you know.
Yeah, I thought that that was the intention of that.
Okay.
Expansion of Res B was, you know, in pro- close proximity to Route nine. That's my recollection anyway.
Yeah, my only additional comment on that is, I think, you know, again, I like it more generalized. I don't mind referencing that as a specific example, but I think we need more time as a committee. I mean, I think it's more a goal of suggesting that if we're looking for strategies, the Route nine corridor is more of the geographic focus. Um, so that's at least my thoughts. Um, so we don't necessarily get over specific into the types of zoning. So I think we just as a committee to understand more. I think this is more of the goal, we're going to explore this over the next, you know, five years as part of the housing production plan.
Sure. Right, we can leave it there. Um, in terms of the, the sort of first step for this one, the next step for this one, um, what, what do y'all see as the, as the next step? Um, you know, maybe it's, it's deferring to this um, other strategy instead. Um, building on the work that you, Al, and um, your uh, wastewater study group, um, is already done. Is there anything else that we would want to say here for the, the sort of next step?
Well, right now, we don't really have uh, multifamily by right zoning.
Right.
I don't know, that, that's probably a, I, I think we ought to be thinking about long term, and I'm not ready to do this, this, this week.
Yeah.
Is uh, is adding uh, higher density housing to um, our zoning ordinances by right.
I think maybe for this, so that's one, the other option could be, Al, for this is maybe the next step is, you know, for the committee to consider hiring consultant, right, to further explore the opportunities along Route nine and then to also maybe, you know, let the wastewater committee advance further, but to work with them at making sure that there's, you know, the inclusion of concept of housing, you know, within that wastewater study. So I think those might be two good next steps for us as a committee.
And we did, we, we have applied for a one-stop grant, which would help us um, identify sort of waste flows and having, you know, a certain amount of waste flow that was sort of nominally assigned to uh, multifamily housing would, would probably make a lot of sense.
And Al, did the select board also put together another planning grant around Route nine?
There's also a Route nine corridor planning grant. I don't know that much about it, other than, you know, it's joint with Westboro. And I, I think actually Schuzeberry is starting, is going to join in as well to sort of think about Route nine in total. Does it, you know, obviously, the three communities are, are, are more similar than they're dissimilar. And we all have uh, you know, the, this giant highway running right through the middle of us.
And, and sorry, that, that planning grant is specifically for considering wastewater capacity or?
No, this is a, for the, as part of the Route nine corridor study. So you might want to put that in there as well, is, is the proposal, is to add housing in, as part of the Route nine corridor study.
I see. Is um, I'll, I'll rework the writing. Uh, but that's great. Um, I know that the, for the housing production plans, the um, state loves to see regional coordination. Um, so that's, that's a good one to highlight. All right. Um, is there anything else we want to add here? For moving on. So here we talked about um, the, this specifically came out of the idea that um, to, to look specifically at the one acre zoning in the R A district. Um, but instead of specifying that specific change, um, taking a, a step back and just saying, uh, look at right sizing zoning near transit at downtown. And maybe that's um, reducing the minimum lot size requirement uh, in, in these areas. Maybe it's um, moving some of those uh, downtown and um, Route nine and uh, train station proximate um, parcels to R B so that it's um, you know, as part of Res B, it has a smaller minimum lot size requirement. Um, that's, that's where we left this. So maybe this gets, we highlight Route nine more clearly here. Um,
One thing I was going to suggest, and this is for the committee, you know, this is a, again, I think we have a bit of, like you said, the goal of this housing production plan is really to focus on what we've already have put in place most recently, right? And to really utilize that first and foremost. I wonder if this is too much of, like, it's, it's one full slides for this, where maybe it might be better if it's just incorporated into slide thirty-two or thirty-one where there's a listing of ideas, right? So it's just one of the five or six other options we're exploring. Um, because I think the committee may need more time on this. And, and again, as Jesse said, maybe it's more of, you know, using this along Route nine. But I'm not sure it deserves an entire slide. So I think this would be a pretty big, you know, change for certain parts. So at least my suggestion might be, let's put it with the other four or five ideas that are additional ideas of, that'll have some further explo- exploring. So.
I would tend to agree.
All right, um, we can do that. Finally, um, this, uh, this is one that's taken a bit more shape since the last time we talked. Tracking the success of zoning and policy changes meant to produce production, you know, terms, it, to, to make sure that what all the great work already doing is, is really um, it's really having the intended effect and um, you know, here we highlight uh, that the um, what's happened so far with the downtown district zoning, um, M B T communities and A D U allowances, of course, it's been not a lot of time since M B T communities um, and A D U allowances were changed. Um, so no, no units have been built or permitted in um, those two. Though, of course, anecdotally, interest in A D U's has ticked up since um, since the state requirement was finalized. Um, in terms of the downtown district, uh, I confirmed with Karina that um, no units have been permitted in the downtown district since adoption um, of that district. But one development with six units and one affordable is currently in front of the planning board um, as of this month. So we do highlight um, those, those um, you know, that progress uh, with, with these changes you've already made. Um, but we also suggest with this page um, that, that further tracking and um, additional resources uh, given to the tracking effort um, will be an important part of um, understanding how Southborough is adding capacity. Um, and what gaps remain, what adjustments are needed. Um, things like that. So with your next housing production plan, you can say, you know, no one's building A D U's. What, what do we need to support? Um, you know, the people being able to do that, uh, things like that. So for the next step, I do have part-time staff here that was discussed for the, for the trust. Um, but I don't know if there's, if there's something else to, to say here.
I don't have any additional thoughts. I do think it's great that we track, right? That's always a good thing, especially because everything has already been done. Um, and again, I think the committee as a general definitely wants to explore one-stop grants or other things potentially to get some, you know, staffing or consultant help, right? Um, so I think that's the right next steps, at least from my perspective.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how to, if this is a next step exactly, but I mean, most of these items you're listening here are pretty new, like twenty twenty-four and beyond, with the exception of the downtown district zoning, this is twenty twenty-one. So I don't know if there's some exploring to do there is, you know, why hasn't had any, anything happened since twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, I, I realize it's, you know, it's, there's only so much you can track after a few months of some of these things being adopted. Um, and so I try to say that here. Uh, that to understand the real effect, you'll, you'll need to look at the impacts. Um, you know, after, after this plan is uh, completed and adopted. So, um, yeah, maybe there's further analysis, maybe there's, yeah, um, part of that staff person's role is to talk with um, stakeholders, understand why development isn't happening in the downtown district. What's um, you know, what are, what are the barriers to taking advantage of that um, of that new zoning change?
Yep.
Great. And then we have uh, what we're sort of informally calling the, the idea of parking lot, things that have come up through our conversations, but um, are still need a good bit of analysis and just wrapping your heads around these ideas. Um, as, as this has been an expedited process. Uh, so this includes things like um, considering inclusionary zoning beyond the existing zones uh, to, to help you achieve and maintain your um, ten percent safe harbor. Um, exploring rent subsidies as a strategy for the trust. Um, you know, where should that happen? Uh, should it be to, should your priority to be to um, make forty B affordable units more deeply affordable or to add additional units at existing affordability levels? Um, another idea is to evaluate sites for a forty R district near the train station. Um, to take advantage of, you know, state or to, to leverage uh, the state um, payments. Um, additionally, uh, we have add part-time staff to the, for the Affordable Housing Trust here as a, as a specific um, strategy. And uh, we had this one um, that came up. Uh, team up with affordable housing developers on appropriately scaled projects beyond forty B. Um, I wasn't sure how much more to uh, fill that out, but um, that was one that came up sort of um,
Yeah.
At the end of our conversation, or our last conversation.
Yeah, I think for that one, we're really thinking about kind of how we can leverage the funds that the trust has, um, since they are limited. Um, so kind of being able to partner uh, with a developer, with a community organization, all of the above, um, to kind of make that, the money that we have go farther.
Great, okay.
And yeah, the note I had on there, um, about forty R was just if we want to specifically call out the parking lot and the McCarthy Pool site that were really kind of in the beginning stages, you know, talk, talking to Mark tonight. Um, but yeah, if it's, I don't know that this is baked enough to include like a specific existing business um, as a potential site.
Sure, I can, I can delete this sentence if that makes sense to everybody. Great. And then of course, um, you know, Southborough, this highlighting that Southborough should stay up to date with best practices for around the region. Um, final section, really, we have uh, other housing strategies, you know, um, the housing production plan. We want to emphasize production strategies, but there are other strategies that would help. Um, help Southborough meet its um, housing goals. Uh, one is to preserve naturally occurring affordable housing. Um, so here we say the best, the first step is to better understand the volume, location and condition of naturally occurring affordable housing in Southborough um, to see if uh, where we're at the sites that potentially that the trust could target for either using funds to to purchase these properties before they're acquired by market redevelopment or owner occupants, or while also considering other incentives such as, and this came up in our last conversation, estate tax relief. So here we highlight a few examples of how you might highlight or identify some of those potential NOAA properties. But without getting too too specific for the purposes of this plan. And we find, you know, generally, there's there's a handful, there are hundreds of opportunities for this sort of thing. Any notes here? This one rephrased a little bit and got some good comments last week. This one is to leverage state funding for infrastructure and other projects by considering housing choice community designation. Housing choice communities get access to the housing choice grant program. Grants through that program are, you know, can be pretty tangentially related to to housing. They can support comprehensive plans, water infrastructure improvements, mobility upgrades, zoning audits. And so we provide a few example projects funded by the housing choice grant program in this past year. Additionally, highlight some of the other benefits with other other state funding programs. And then on the next slide, I I got the question last week, what does it take to be a housing choice community? What what sort of lift would that look like for Southborough? A community must meet one of the following criteria to be considered for a housing choice community designation. And it's some, it's both some increase in the total number of units permitted across the affordability spectrum. And a certain number of best practices actively implemented. Some of those best practices are classified as affordable by by the program. And so those are highlighted here in terms of how close is Southborough to meeting some of those requirements? You know, as of as of January twenty twenty five, you'd added about three hundred units or an eight point eight increase in in units over the past five years. So you're definitely meeting that part of the equation, but in terms of achieving or 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 being close to achieve some of the potential best practices. These were the ones that bumped up that jumped out to me as you know, potentially accessible for for Southborough, given your the work you've already done and and the work that's highlighted in this plan. So the full list of potential strategies is linked, there are twenty one. But you already have inclusionary zoning with density, you know, with that that supports higher density development in the MBTA communities zone. You have created new districts, change zoning or dedicated local resources to incentivize transatlantic development in the last five years with with three A. I, you know, I'm not exactly sure what a demonstrated pattern of accepting forty B projects without imposing conditions that render projects uneconomic or unfeasible means, but you have one twenty turnpike, you potentially have others along turnpike road that that could support support the finding that you're approving forty, you know, forty B projects. The you have, you will have a HLC certified housing production plan. You have mixed use zoning in the town district. And, you know, it's within reach for your SHI safe harbor to be at or above ten percent, and it is within reach for you to demonstrate implementation of at least twenty five percent of the strategies in this plan over the next five years. Or potentially your your last plan.
So, so, yeah, so Sarah Brand, first of all, this is great. I mean, I think I was when I asked the question last time. This is really helpful. It also shows that we're technically looks like almost already a housing choice community, which means may give us access to additional funds. That's great. So I think it's great. This is included. You know, so by any way, just want to say thank you for, you know, putting this together.
Sure, yeah, I mean, you would need to apply and I've made some assumptions that maybe you know, they would, it might be some effort to put together all the justification. So potentially, that's that's your next step. But yeah, I was I was pleased to see that you're already checking a lot of these boxes. Great. And then in terms of how the goals and strategies align, this is a this is a new slide, looking at, you know, how which strategies help you work towards which goals? Because of the wording of the goals, I was having a hard time fitting them both on the axes. So you do have the the goals numbered and then listed below. And it's quite small at this layout, but it would be ten point five when you when you print. So I we can, I I can take any notes on this. But I I don't. And I can I can read through it if you want, or people can just look at it and let me know if anything's if you have any notes.
I think this is really helpful to see. It helps kind of tie everything together and brings us back to the goals at the beginning. So I like this. Thank you.
Great.
Agreed. Want to be mindful of time here, I guess. Do any other committee members have comments on the draft? I do want to also open it up to potential comments from the public. There are a few people that are attending tonight, but just first want to see if committee members had any other comments they want to relay to Sarah Brown.
Great work. Sarah Brand, I did send over the area median income link to Fanny. Just as a sidebar, you and I can exchange emails offline to see where the discrepancy is between those numbers. But I mean, other than that, great work. Thank you.
Yes, agreed, agreed. I I have one question, I guess more for the committee. I wonder if we should have a slide at the end with like recommendations? You know, where we just, I mean, it's it's sort of in in different places throughout the document, but just at the end, it might be more powerful to just have one slide with however many recommendations we have throughout here.
Who is the target audience for this presentation?
So this is the this is the housing production plan draft itself. We laid out in presentation format, but it's, you know, an eight and a half, eleven printable document.
I was going to suggest that if we're going to need something that is for the meeting with the planning board and the select board, we will need something that is briefer.
Sure, yeah, we can. There is a an executive summary that's shaping up, I guess, and we can drop some of the the highlights I can work with.
Yeah, I think I'm I'm not sure, you know, and Jesse, you you tell me if the the planning board would would, I don't think they would be patient patient to sit through an hour and a half. Now, I don't, I think this would run an hour without the comments.
Yeah, I would, I I agree. I would recommend circulation of the, you know, deliverable. You know, a week or so in advance. That would give all the the board members on both boards time to review. And yeah, do a more summarized fifteen, twenty minute presentation.
I would I would focus on the conclusions and the action items sort of going forward in the, you know, terms of, you know, things that we might actually have to do and which, you know, might include, you know, some zoning changes like the 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 limit on the senior housing or over fifty five community items. That's that's one that those are easy to grasp and and straightforward. Does that make sense?
I I'll I would just add to that, please rest assured, I can't speak for the select board members, but I I know my fellow or my old prior to me leaving the planning board, the the four people that I served with will review this with a flying tooth comb and be prepared with questions about everything. So don't feel the need to, you know, go over line by line of the entire plan.
Sure.
I'm sure select board is the same way. Thanks.
Well, so I definitely agree, agree with that. Sorry, I got.
I I just have clarification there. So are we suggesting we send this entire document, right, to to both select board members and planning board members, whoever else? But when we do the actual presentation, we just have a a briefer sort of executive summary version?
Yeah.
So, okay.
That's what I'm hearing, too.
Good, thanks.
So maybe I might recommend Sarah Brent, maybe that you should update this and obviously get it over to Ellen and Jesse. They can circulate to the committee members. We can look at it maybe one more time. And if we're good, then we can get it off to the select board and the planning board. I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, I think we we need to move meet and approve the the housing production plan as or I probably don't have to approve it until after the the select board and planning board review it.
Okay. So maybe we'll do is maybe just.
Doug, can I just jump in two seconds? Al, that is definitely the point of the joint meeting on July fourteenth, I think, is for the, you know, to have a vote and have it. What's the word? I guess ratified, accepted
Yes.
by select and planning.
So Mel just pauses here for a second. I don't see any hand raised from the attendees, but I want to just give him maybe an opportunity to see if anybody does want to raise their hand and provide any comment or ask any questions. So maybe we'll just give a a short pause here. All right, well, I am not seeing any hands raised. So yeah, so I think Sarah Brand, I think that'd be the great next step, if you can update that and get it back to Ellen and Jesse. And then Al, to your comment, we could talk a little more schedule, maybe after, because Mark, I do see Mark Davis, I don't want to hold him up much longer, but we should talk after maybe about a meeting, you know, again, if we want to get together before the fourteenth, it's probably going to be the week of the eighth, right? Because obviously next week is already Fourth of July week. So I might suggest again, if everyone's good with the document, maybe we send it ahead of time. I mean, again, that's the question out for you and Jesse. I mean, do you want to meet one more time and then send it to folks? Because that would only be like four days or five days less than a week before, or should we have Sarah Brent update and maybe try to get it out next week to folks and advance us meeting one more time? Just trying to think about schedule and timing.
My my thought would be to get it out to the board members as soon as possible.
Yep, okay, I would agree with that.
I I agree.
Okay.
We we can, we can say, you know, this is this is a draft, you know, it's it's, you know, we we think we're reasonably close, but you know, you don't know until you've actually put it out there to get people's reactions.
And just more for logistics, because we are the staff and everything, right? So is that Alan Jesse, is that me as chair sending an email to the chairs of the select board and the planning board? Or how does, yeah, okay. Okay.
Didn't know you were that powerful, did you? Chief cook and bottle washer.
Yeah, the first thing on the agenda going forward is going to be one stop application for, you know, part time help. That's the grant. Great. Well, Sarah Brett, so how does that sit with you? What do you think you might be able to turn around a updated draft for us? Just more so we can understand timing.
That all sounds good to me. So just looking ahead, there's this suggestion of getting them the slides by the seventh, so they'll have a week before the fourteenth.
Think we like try to get it sooner if possible, right? I think Jesse was saying try to get out as soon as possible, right? But I guess what what's your timing?
Sure. I
Or you can get back to Ellen and Jesse. I don't mean to put you on the spot too either, right? So by all means, like, so I think I think, I mean, we, first of all, I I want to echo everyone in this committee. Thank you, Sarah Brett and Community Scale for all your hard work. I think you guys have done a lot in a very short period of time. So, you know, I think we have a great game plan. So I'll let you get back to Ellen and Jesse, and we'll we'll work around that from there. So.
Sure. Probably sometime next week early.
Okay, that'd be great. Great. All right, awesome. Well, Sarah Brent, thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Sarah Brett.
Thank you.
All right, so next item on the agenda is Mark Davis, chapter forty R presentation. I do see Mark in the participants. I'm going to promote him. So I'm also happy if you guys want to take a two minute break before we start. I know we've been going at it for almost an hour and a half, but also fine just to keep going up to everyone, so.
I wouldn't mind grabbing a snack if that's okay.
Yeah, do you want to just maybe just pause for two minutes and then we will come right back if that works for everyone?
Thank you.
Mark, we're almost there. Sorry, just appreciate your patience.
They need some juice.
Uh, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yep, yep. Alright, thank you everyone for that uh short pause, um so. Um, I'm going to turn it over to Mark Davis, but I'm not sure if any committee member wants to do any kind of preamble, or if not, we'll just turn it over to Mark.
So I I, Mark had given a presentation to the um. Select board on a forty R development and um. Certainly an intriguing idea, um and I thought that, you know, given that there would. Is it doing something like that would be a significant opportunity for uh expanding affordable housing. Uh I thought, you know. This committee ought to at least be aware of what a forty R is. And, you know, how one might go about doing doing it if uh if it made sense. So with that, I'm taking away Mark.
Okay, let me just quickly run through a couple things and then Doug, I'll have you put up my uh. Spreadsheet. The uh packet I gave you. Um, let me, let me just first explain. The MBTA's Community Act. Basically has nothing to do with the MBTA. Um. And I think Jesse knows full well. Um that they would never allow you to utilize their station area as uh one of the parcels that you could rezone. The MBTA wasn't even notified that the legislature was going to pass this until about three weeks before it passed. And they were asked their opinion and they were just caught blindsided by the whole thing. Um. And that's fairly typical. I worked for the MBTA Real Estate for about eight years, the beginning of this century. Um. And I was in charge of transit oriented development. Um transit oriented development is very similar to forty R, very similar to the. MBTA Communities Act, but Transit Oriented Development is the program that the MBTA utilizes. Um to do long term leases, sales of of their property. Um, so I spent probably eight years. On about forty projects in Eastern Massachusetts and Boston. Uh going through all the community process, all the zoning issues uh to uh pull these projects together. Forty R. Came into effect uh by uh, it was DH. CD at the time, Department of Community Development, I don't know what it is today. Um but they came in and this was basically to soften. Um, the approach on forty B. Um. And it and it gave the communities a a voluntary way to uh rezone. Uh and and have a community effort tied to it. I'm going to take it one step further um and and tie the MBTA directly into this and and I'll kind of go through that with you. If you can flip the slide. This is the uh MBTA Stationland. What's in purple? Is areas that are owned by the MBTA. Which includes their parking lot of three hundred and seventy eight cars. And also includes the uh mill pond. Uh which is in the uh westerly side of the parking lot, and if you look carefully, there is a dark blue. Part of the mill pond that goes right into the parking lot. That actually is the old sluice. That powered the mill and there's a pipe that goes underneath the parking lot, all the way over to where it says MBTA. There's a pipe that goes under there all the way through and and tha- that's what powered the mill. As another aside, and and Al, you and I may want to have a separate conversation because I think we need to protect it. At the uh right hand side of the mill pond, right about where your hand is, a little bit north of that, right there. Uh, there's a dam. Uh, which is owned by the MBTA. Uh, the dam is in poor condition. Um, I actually commissioned the study when I was there because no one else knew how to do it. Um, it's one of three dams the uh MBTA owns. Um, and basically. If it weren't here. All it would happen is the mill pond would just totally drain. And the river would go back to its original banks. It would not flood down below, although the state sized the pipe that goes under Route eighty five. Large enough that it would take the emergency flow. So th- there's no public issue related to the dam. However, about two weeks ago, I read that the MBTA's decided to repair. Or get rid of this dam and uh another one in Canton, which is probably more important to them. I think the town may want to take a position to uh not eliminate this dam. Um. Uh regardless of whatever happens to the station and what I'm proposing. Uh, the mill pond's a feature. Um, it it is something the town really shouldn't lose. Um, so I I think there's a vested interest in the town to uh keep that dam. Um, just so that we have that water area. And if you, if a housing development is done down here, that the the mill pond is going to be an enhancement. Um. To it. Uh oddly enough, when I was at the MBTA, I negotiated a uh. Deal with the fire department to be able to get emergency access across the parking lot and the MBTA's. Supposed to be plowing and not stacking uh their snow. So if there was an emergency in the mill pond, the fire department could could immediately gain access. I don't know what the status of that is and whether they ever did it, but uh. Clearly, I think that's that's just an overriding issue that I think the town might be interested in ke- keeping. The.
Mark, Jesse has a question, uh just.
Yeah, I I'm just trying to get some context as to what this is. How is this relevant to the purview of this committee?
Well, what I'm going to do is I'm going to explain a forty R. And then I'm going to explain the community process associated with doing business with the MBTA. And then you'll understand, I think, how something like this could work. So give me a few minutes.
Mister Davis, we 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 just recently passed. Buy right multifamily housing. Within half mile of this train station.
How, h- h- however. What you, what you don't have. And what's lacking in the whole MBTA process is you don't have a vision. Of what those parcels could be developed as.
I disagree. We went through that in great detail.
Oh, I understand.
Planning board hearings with over many, many, many sessions.
Oh, I I get it. The 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 and let me answer that in a. Convoluted way, give me about ten minutes, fifteen minutes, and then I'll come back to answer that, if 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 that's okay. So essentially, you have the MBTA's station here, that's what the MBTA owns. The blue lines is the actual uh train corridor, it's not owned by the MBTA. It's owned by Mast dot Rail, which is a sister organization. And just to let you know, I am a sub consultant for Mast dot Rail. Uh but I deal with utility contracts, I'm not involved in the Worcester branch at this point. I am involved with the uh. Uh Berkshire branch, which is about as far west as you can go on uh uh utility contracts. So that's basically what the MBTA owns. And what I'm proposing is to overlay a forty hour zoning district just on the MBTA land. Now let me go, I think the next couple slides we can quickly run through. There's the Cordova Mills, I think this is the oldest picture, this is how the station parking lot was used, you'll note a four story building. I think this was the original mill building. Uh built basically because of the power of the water. And their ability to bring their uh workers in by rail and ship their products out by rail. Um. Note, note the steps over the rails uh to get from one side to the other and I'll I'll come back to that. The next photo is from the uh mill pond and you, this is a uh. More recent shot of the uh. Uh mill, this is the one that burned down in the uh seventies, but it's close to five stories. Giving you an idea of the massing and what was there. Next slide, forty R, forty R was done as a softer way to uh. Have communities embrace affordable housing. However, there's some component components in here which your. Previous discussion had in there and had in there correctly, there are. Zoning incentive payments, by placing a forty hour uh our district, you would get between ten thousand and six hundred thousand. Depending on how dense it is, what's being proposed there. There are payments per unit which go to the town, all of this is unrestricted funds that could be utilized for any capital expense. Within the town. They have in there a reimbursement for school impacts, I think it's up to three thousand dollars a student. Uh and there's also uh if if the students re. Uh, the cost of the additional students exceed the average cost. Previous that the state picks up the tab for the extra cost. There is a higher state match for new school buildings. A forty hour district at the railroad station would would comply. And the town would receive an additional one percent on MSBA projects. And then there's a more favorable consideration when applying for discretionary grants. Down below, very similar, it's an overlay district. It uh allows housing to be built between eight and twenty units, uh an acre depending on on what you build. Now let me drill down a little bit, the 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 next slide. Will show you and it's two thousand seventeen, I for some reason couldn't find a later one. Thirty three communities have adopted forty R. Plymouth is at the railroad station, Kingston's at the railroad station, Newburyport, I know very, very well. They have a project at the railroad station, Natick uh got grant money from. Us uh at the MBTA and uh actually they're revisiting their station. Um, their forty R district is the old Natick Paperboard Mills, which is about half a mile north on um. Route twenty seven. They got, I think, six hundred thousand uh toward their uh high school, uh just because of of that zoning. Great Barrington has it, Pittsfield has it, and again, all surrounding uh uh railroad stations. Next slide. Here's, here's the heart of what I'm proposing, now this is a transit oriented development project in Newton. This is pure MBTA project, I was the MBTA project manager for this. Essentially, the deal here is the one long building to the left in in the purple area. Was the former parking lot for Woodland Station, Woodland is the Green Line, it's the second station in from uh. Riverside. Um. The deal was that the uh developer, which is um. Oh, Ted Ty, National Development. Built a hundred and eighty units of housing. On a parking lot just about the same size as Southborough, I think it was three hundred, maybe a little bit less. But what they did is they built a parking garage, which is the two structures you kind of see to the right at the end, yes. So they replaced their parking within a structured parking garage. They built it privately built, so it wasn't publicly built, so the MBTA could get value from a private construction. And not putting it out to bid. And essentially, we valued the property. To the value of the parking garage. So at the end of the day, the developer ended up with a site free and clear. And they traded it with the parking garage for the MBTA. The MBTA retained easements. They could drive all their patrons in front of the apartment complex into the parking garage. The parking garage is probably one of the more successful Red Sox parking garages. I had to negotiate with Brayburn, which is the golf course to the right, and on the opposite side of Route sixteen. Is the uh. Woodland Country Club, I had to negotiate with them as well. Brayburn got a maintenance uh shed and we traded a piece of land for that. Um, so essentially, the deal. This model deal is that the developer. After a bid process, and I'll go through that with the MBTA, he was the designated builder. Then built the garage, traded the garage for the land, and then was able to uh build his project. He also took on uh improving the station. Um, he made it fully he- handicapped accessible. Um. And he basically, his people can park in the garage. Uh if they had more than two cars or they park under the building, um which which works out either way. He has twenty five percent of the units in the project are affordable. And is probably one of the more successful projects uh in in the area, so much so. That the city of Newton, which is a very difficult city to do business in. Has decided that they're going to do a similar project at Riverside Station. Uh Riverside will be far more in the excess. Uh and mixed use development, but with a large component of uh of housing. Um, I can, the next slide will give you an idea of what. The building looks like. And prior to the sale. Um, the um developer had to basically um. Take this project and get it fully approved by the city of Newton before the MBTA would uh would do anything. And the next slide will show you the proximity of the station, which is right there to to the left. And um the the complex. Five stories, it kind of fits into the hillside. Uh next to it, there is a Goldamire Nursing Home is up at the top of it, looking down on this. Um, we never had any concerns from the neighborhood, which is on the other side of the tracks. Which is all single family housing. Um. And uh Newton Wellesley actually uh supported the project because a lot of their employees became tenants. And the last picture will show you the little roundabout at the end of the driveway, to the left is the driveway into Brayburn. To the left is how you get into the parking garage under the building. And that's the uh three story uh uh parking garage. Now, if you can go back up to the MBTA. Um site plan. Yes. Essentially, what I am suggesting. Is to place. A simple forty hour zoning. On the MBTA land, that's it. is to place a simple 40-hour zoning on the MBTA land. That's it. In order for the MBTA to do anything with their land, they require a community process. They will not do anything unless the community is 100% behind what is being developed at that site. So that what I would suggest is Phase Two. Once the zoning is in place, we then go through a community process, which the MBTA does. I would suggest that we use the grant money that the governor came out with to do a comprehensive plan on how this would be done. This goes into the detail of really designing what it's going to look like, the number of units. It costs it out. The one I did for Newburyport, we used a different zoning mechanism, but we didn't use 40R. There, we did a complete community process. And I think 15 years later, the developer that was involved in the community process became the, the builder who actually won one of the bids on one of the parcels there. The MBTA is under the Chapter 161 of Mass General Laws. They do their own selling process. It's not done by DCAM. It's not done by any other agency. It's handled internally by the MBTA. So basically, what they do is they work through a community process, working out the density, working out what it looks like, working out what the facade looks like along the roads, and basically, pre-plan the total development. They do a cost analysis in that study. Some of these, we were working under a $50,000 grant when we did the zoning in Newburyport. I can tell you, there was another one in Bartley Yards in Dudley Square, of all places. It was an old bus station. That one was a three-year project with the Boston Redevelopment Authority, and we masked, I'm going to say, 875 units on an old bus station. But essentially, this is in the wheelhouse of the MBTA. So even if we put 40-hour zoning on this, nothing's going to happen without a successful process to do the actual underlying project. And essentially, and I agree, by the way, with the comments in your previous discussion, eliminate McCarthy pools from any discussion. However, McCarthy pools would be a logical place to put a parking garage. Slide it over to that location, four stories. And then the parking lot is free and clear for the, the, the project. Project would probably be built up on a platform utilizing the existing parking under the building to be their parking. And then it could go as high as you want, four to five stories. I also would include the parcel where Fitzgerald's is. There is a side parcel to Fitzgerald's where they park under a special permit that never got completed. So they potentially would be part of this project and tie that side in, some townhouses, some mixed-use. Basically, there are two plans for the rail line that will come into play at some point in the future. One has been announced recently where they're going to add a third rail between Brighton Yards and Boston, all the way out to Framingham. I think the intent is to add a third rail out to Worcester, but they've got choke points, and this is one of them, where they just can't fit it in. They don't have enough land area, so they're not ready to make that commitment. The other commitment the MBTA has is they will be electrifying this rail line over the next 15 years. It's, I think, the second rail line they'll do. And basically, that's the electric catenary, similar to what Amtrak uses south of Boston, so all their trains would convert over to electric. They don't have any other plans. I can get in. Oh, I know this station too well. There's also, this is a defense, National Defense Corridor. So if you saw the parade in Washington and you saw the tanks being brought into the city, they were brought in through the Amtrak tracks. This is part of that network of tracks, and it goes into Framingham, and then west of the station heads south down to Gillette.
Mark, I want to just jump because we're getting a little bit late here, just for the committee. So I might just say, if you can wrap it up, and we can turn it over to committee members, that'd be great.
Okay. Essentially, it's a two-step process. A, I'm suggesting to rezone it, and then B, we apply for the grant and we go through the planning process. The planning process ends with a memorandum of agreement between the MBTA and the town as to how this would be developed. And my point way back when is this could give you a blueprint on how to develop your other MBTA sites by utilizing this as, as one of the key parcels. And if you think about it historically, this was the center of town for Cordova. And there's an opportunity to bring that back. What I would do is two things in the rezoning. I've already talked to the MBTA. This is a low-interest site to them. So they don't expect a developer, but they're intrigued that the town would want to do this and bring everything up to snuff, so that they could go ahead and put the darn thing out to bid. I would get a letter from the MBTA, basically not objecting to the zoning, which they don't, and they would then require that the town begin the process for doing an MOA, which would solidify how the zoning looks. Part of the MOA process would be bringing in Fitzgerald's, bringing in McCarthy Pools, because they would be part of this process. And a developer would be required, probably, to buy out McCarthy or move them somewhere else in town to be able to build the parking garage there, and the same with Fitzgerald's. So what I would suggest upfront is to just get a very simple first right of refusal for the town on either of those projects, so that they don't sell them underneath us. The secret to the whole mix is the MBTA is exempt from local zoning. The MBTA is exempt from the Rivers Act. The MBTA is exempt from local conservation, but they always talk to them. They would do a project, and all they do is they, they build it to the state standards. This would kind of incorporate all of those things. So somehow, the MBTA would be involved in McCarthy Pools, because that zoning right would transfer there. The other benefit to the town, not only with the listed benefits of 40R, which, which are tremendous, the other benefit to the town is you're able now to tax the improvements to this land. The MBTA would probably do a 99-year lease. They would still own the land underneath. They don't want to own the parking garage, so there'd probably be some long-term lease between the parking garage, the owner of the project, and, and the MBTA, and that's the quid pro quo. Their lease payments would be zero, and that's, that's really what the price of the parking lot would, would be. Fitzgerald's would be an outright purchase, or even a partnership with them to develop that piece of land.
So Mark, again, I appreciate the presentation. I would like to get it over to the committee members, and I think we have a couple raised hands too as well. So maybe, appreciate your time in the presentation, but I might first maybe turn it over to the committee members if they have any questions or comments.
So, you know, given that within a half-mile of the train station is recently passed a major zoning change for MBTA communities for by right multifamily housing. I, I, there's no way I can support advancing this. It would be completely insensitive to the residents who just went through a very long and difficult process with many, many, many hearings, many, 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 you know, nights of, you know, trying to understand what's going on. It's just, I, I really kind of feel almost offended that this is being discussed, because these people have been through a lot. Mr. Davis, let me finish. They've been through a lot. And I think it shows a real lack of sensitivity to even suggest this at this time. So I'm out.
I, I understand what you're saying. The fear.
Mr. Davis, I would say, just, can we have all the committee members just, you know, reply first? I mean, I think this is not meant to be more, you know, again, appreciate you being here and presenting, but I'd love to hear from all the committee members first, and then open up to the public. So Jesse, thank you for your comments.
I'll go. You know, I too am sensitive to what folks in that area have been through. On the other hand, I mean, I like to hear new ideas. This is certainly a new and very different idea that, you know, it's intriguing, put it that way, but, you know, there are significant hurdles, as Jesse alluded to, and we've already gotten one letter from a resident who raised a number of legitimate concerns, so. But I appreciate you, you bringing this forward, and, you know, I think it's, it's worth some consideration. Thank you.
I would, I agree with what, what Paul said, that I appreciate you coming, putting together this presentation. I'm, I think it's a valuable opportunity to hear ideas. And I would also say that I appreciate the thorough community engagement process that the MBTA undertakes after zoning is put in place. But if this is something we think about at all, and we're on, you know, step one of 300, that there would need to be really meaningful community engagements before, you know, there's any sort of zoning consideration. And so I think also just important to stress to community members that, again, where we are in this process and that, yeah, nothing is, is happening. I think, you know, we're, we're here to understand the tools that are available to try and create more housing, and this is one of those ideas. And, yeah, that anything that, that happened, I think, should involve many opportunities to engage with residents throughout.
Oh, you're on mute.
I keep getting cut off. I invited Mark in because, you know, this is a, a tool in the toolbox, as Ellen said. You know, I didn't, never thought it would be easy, and, but, you know, this is one of, of what is hopefully a large number of paths to more affordable housing in town. And I, I think it's worth at least thinking about, but I, I agree with Jesse. I mean, you know, the, the, that the community in this area has just been through a lengthy process, and, you know, this may, may go on the back burner for a while, but I think it's something that we ought to have in the back of our minds, that someday this might be something we might want to do. There are some economic benefits to the town, and, you know, this is done properly. This could be a positive, but I, I think it's, it's a long shot at the moment. It's simply a, a, a tool in the toolbox.
Okay, great. I have a John Cage in, as an attendee. John, I'm going to allow you are unmuted, so please feel free to speak.
Hopefully, you can hear me. Thank you very much.
We can.
Yeah, this is, this proposal was, I think, prevent, done for the planning board about a year ago. And as kind of already mentioned with this, the, the MBTA area, the community area, one thing that is, that should be looked into, and, and not really to the MBTA, but to those areas that the MBTA has done this with, is the fact that once this is zoned as a 40R, the whole point of it is to remove a lot of the roadblocks, I guess you could say, to reduce the local, and the big part is, the selling point of it is, it reduces local control. And I, well, Mr. Davis has mentioned that, you know, 40 years ago, there was a four-story or five-story buildings here, as, because it was a commercial area. That isn't actually how this area is now developed, and that was a very large sticking point when getting to the MBTA community actors to make sure that the area wasn't going to be heavily high, high-rise or heavily developed. And as the 40-hour zoning district does state, it's, you know, some of the options are up to 20 units per acre, which is, you know, five units more dense than what the MBTA Community Act actually did. So if the board wants to go forward with this, and I don't think that we should not inquire, I think we should inquire with the other towns how much control, how much discussion, how much of their input was taken into account when it comes to a 40R and the actual final development. I know that they are trying to work with us in a way. They work with the different towns, but we lose environmental control. We lose all zoning rights. All of that control that we used to have in this area, and while we're not developing it, because it is a parking lot owned by the MBTA, but when this does happen, we would have very limited planning review. And that's actually part of the purpose. It gets rid of those roadblocks. So if MBTA isn't really, or their developer isn't a very good partner with us, we could find that area being developed in a way we don't like. So the other comment, I just want to make sure, I understand the Mill Pond is questionable, and of course, as, as Mr. Davis says, you could get rid of the, the dam. How polluted is that? Has anybody done any type of study in looking at that? Because last I heard, it was a lot of mercury or heavy elements in there, and letting that dam go or just draining it would be rather toxic to our neighbors.
John, so first of all, appreciate your comments. I don't know if this committee has any information really on the environmental condition of the pond. And again, I would say, you know, as Alan and Paul are all committee's members, that this is just part of our exploration process, right? You know, and recently, we had, you know, Habitat for Humanity in. And again, I think as a newly formed committee, we're just looking at, you know, hearing from a number of stakeholders as to, you know, ideas and concepts. And you probably saw in the Housing Production Plan, you know, community scale, and us already talked about to, you know, you know, learning from other affordable housing trusts and what they have done. So this is just, again, another tool in the toolkit for us to explore, right? So, but this is purely for discussion purpose at this point for the committee, just for your background, so.
Okay. But, yeah, and, and as a committee, I think, talk to the other communities. If Mr. Davis has a list of, of communities that's done this, not just the, the really pretty one that he takes to show, but other ones, I think we should talk to him, see how much control those communities ever had in their discussion with builds from start to beginning and.
Well, appreciate your comment and your suggestion. So, thank you. All right. So at this point, I think we are all set on this item. We do need to go. I think we are all set on this item. We do need to go to some other items. So.
Could I just make a final statement if if. Possible?
If you can keep it brief, yes, please.
Well, I'll keep it brief. Just to talk about what John Cage just brought up and and Jesse Stein. That that the key to a development on MBTA land is. That nothing is going to happen unless there's a memorandum of agreement. Between the town and the MBTA and that memorandum of agreement. Goes into all the details of what's being developed, how tall it is. The color of the facade, how people are going to get from one side of the track to the other. How things back up to the tracks. All of that is a blueprint. So that when they put it out to bid, what the garage is going to look like, it's all going to be designed in advance. And and this is what the MBTA Community Act didn't do. You're asking the developer to do that work for you and then bring it to the town. Here, the town is doing the planning effort completely. And they're telling the development community and and I would, we always wanted developers to be part of the process. Because that gives up an effort of making it substantial. So that they know it's feasible and the town knows exactly what they're going to get when a developer is is set. So all the pre-approvals are done through the community process. The the projects you could look at. Look at Newburyport. Now, again, the forty R was brought into Newport late, but all the planning was done ten years ago at the station. Cordage Park down in Plymouth did one and the MBTA had to do some work with them. Woodland was not a forty R. Woodland was just a straight project with the MBTA. Wellington Station is. Westboro put in transit-oriented development zoning. So that any parcel in that area could have been developed. That's what NADIC did. And that's what some of these other communities are doing. So what got the MBTA's attention is that we were taking a blank slate. And for the community, we would be the ones who would design it and get it to work. And then get it approved and then get the MOA approved. And then it's up to the MBTA to find a developer or put it out to bid because they know there's a developer interested in it. And then it it becomes a project. Putting the forty R in is simple. Nothing can happen unless you have the community process because the MBTA won't allow it. So that's the key to it and then you're able to lock in any of the benefits of the forty R. And then go through the community process with them. Could take a year, it could take two years, it could take five years. But it's a process that works throughout. And I can direct you to eighteen different stations and communities that are doing this.
Well, Mr. Davis, definitely appreciate your time and the presentation and I do appreciate the discussion as well. So we need to move on to some other agenda items for tonight, but thank you again and. Have a good evening.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, it is obviously getting late, so. I think the only item that we really need to, well, two things. I think we need to set a date for another meeting, right? We don't have another meeting on the calendar at this, actually, we did send out dates before. As I say that, I'm going to re retract that. We, didn't we pick dates already for our next meeting?
July fourteen, joint meeting.
Yeah, I think, but don't we also have a another date on the calendar for our next regularly scheduled meeting? I know we had sent out a kind of a schedule of dates. Trying to see, sorry, give me one second.
July tenth, six thirty PM.
Okay. Does July tenth, six thirty PM still work for us? Is that good for us to get together one more time before the fourteenth meeting? Just asking committee members.
It's in my calendar.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep.
Does that work for everyone else still?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, great. I will send out an agenda for that. So if you guys can have patience for a couple more minutes, it would be, well, actually, now as I say this. We can just do the executive committee meeting minutes next time to go into executive session. I know it's late and we had a lot on the agenda. So unless you guys feel like we need to enter into executive session, I'm okay if we want to close this meeting and just pick up on those. On the tenth, but just curious what the committee would like to do. I'm not sure Paul or Al, if there's any kind of update you want to give in executive session today. Or we can wait till next meeting.
I don't have anything to add.
I don't have anything that can't wait.
Okay. All right, so then. It's just maybe a motion to, so we're going to meet in the tenth, which is the next meeting. I'll get an agenda out for that. I don't think there's any other items that we need to discuss tonight. If not anything else, do I have a motion to close the hearing?
Move to adjourn.
Do I have a second? Okay, great. All right, all in favor? Al?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
And Doug is aye. Excellent. All right. Well, thank you, everyone. Longer meeting than usual. And we will see you guys on the tenth.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. Have a night.